Let's go ahead and get started. Welcome to Historical Commission, to our dinner this evening. It's great to have you all here to join us for a joint meeting, work session. And why don't we go around the room and introduce ourselves for folks who want to be in here. Hello, everybody. Can I call some mayor?
Hi, Laura Skajinski, trustee.
Mark Laces, Mayor of Tum.
Carol Wallagurski, Historical Commission.
Karen Wallagurski, Historical Commission.
Matt Magan, the mayor.
Vicky Kupner, new to the Historical Commission.
Well, new return.
New return. All right.
Larry Dorsey, Historical Commission.
Sandy Ammerley, trustee.
Jill Roberts, Historical Commission.
Katie Olson, Historical Commission.
Neil Shaw, trustee.
Kevin Ryan, trustee.
Ken West, trustee.
All right, thanks, everybody. Larry, we've got a list of a couple of things to cover. You're going to jump into those.
What's first?
The committee remote call-in policy.
Okay, yeah. Well, as always, we thank all, we thank trustees for all the support over the years. We've got a lot accomplished so far this year, I think. And we had our spring program and our historic walk to original Superior and had some repairs done to the Grasso Park House and got some steps installed and got some things hanging on the wall that dug out of our collection and put on the wall like an old crank telephone, for example. And of course, our new diorama that was made, HO scale diorama of industrial mine buildings and mine camp. So I'd like to invite all of you down to take a look at it, some of these things, especially our diorama. Maybe that's just because I'm a model railroad fan, I don't know. If you like scale models and you want to see what the buildings look like in scale, in HO scale, then come on down. But we have a concern about the call-in policy because we have at least one, occasionally two people who need to call in for various reasons. And so we'd like to bring it up for discussion this evening. Jill Roberts is going to take the handoff on this topic, so it's going to fix her directly.
So we did put together a summary that I'll hand out in a minute, and I want to echo what Larry said, right? We are a team of volunteers, right, with ties to the community. And we've worked very well in partnership. And part of that is because of the flexibility the town has had and the openness to what we've done, right? I mean, Larry just rattled off a few recent successes, but if you go back in time, look at the development of us being in Grasso Parks, the survey, the historical survey of original town, right, bringing that in, yeah, you can give me that for me. We designed and published the children's history coloring books, right? We do special programs that cover all ages, from the second grade field trips to the spring walk, to the tombstone tours, to the Fourth of July booth, to the fire truck.
Is the same?
Yeah, same.
Yep, they're all the same. We have mapped the cemetery, right, and done the prairie dog mitigation, lost Superior, right, several years ago. We just were getting ready, getting ready or just have reprinted that.
Reprinted, yeah.
The archaeological dig of the actual mine site, right, and having that track. And part of the reasons for this success, like I said, is because of the flexibility, the openness, the willingness to work and support. And we want to continue that, right? And one of the challenges we have faced, and thankfully, Vicky just filled an open slot that's been there for a long time, is how do we bridge, how do we bridge people like myself, right? Personally, I have a job and I call in and I double dip during the meetings, right? I do have to be physically present at work during our meetings. We also have, now Bob Morgan, I'm going to use as an example today, who isn't here because he's having some failing health, but he is a vital member to our group. Prior to him, we had Denzel Athlin. Denzel would use my call-in number and we would all participate by phone. And that's when the things of three, five years ago were getting done. And we got his input because of that support by phone. In reading through the town minutes, I would be remiss to say, if I was a bit shocked when I heard the town voted on policies with a thumbs up, thumbs down, but that's a sidebar. But that said, to make a policy that starts to restrict that and was, came across as based on perception, not on fact, right? Again, a personal statement, I can negotiate multi-billion dollar contracts on the phone very effectively and have done so for 25-plus years. Karen had a track record of a career doing the same thing. So I think we have a perception that we need to talk about, the players involved as well, and ask to have that revisited. And that's why we're here tonight, is to say, how do we revisit that? Because I think it will stagnate where we can go.
We certainly don't want to restrict the ability of people to volunteer and do great things for the committee here. And I think one example of that is kind of how we've started.
Sorry, we can't hear you.
Okay. So we certainly don't want to restrict the abilities of the committee to do its good work. And I think one of the examples of how we have been flexible on another part is where we've gotten some guidelines around membership and terms and term limits and things like that. For the Historical Commission, we've specifically addressed those and said that's, we have the flexibility to waive that. And for me, it makes perfect, really good sense to allow you the flexibility to do call-ins as needed. And welcome others' comments on this as well.
Well, the other part of the call-in to those, then she wouldn't, whoever calls in isn't counted as part of the quorum or able to vote on issues and so on. That seems to be something reasonable that a caller person could count and be able to vote as well.
So I was the one who originally brought this to the rest of the board. I said I'd like to see all the committees move to allow for a call-in. And I think the Historical Commission is an example of where this has worked wonderfully. And I mean, I've seen fantastic contributions from Jill when she's been on the phone. I think today we live in a modern society where, as Jill very eloquently pointed out, you can negotiate billion-dollar deals over the phone without an issue. So I would really like to see us not just make an exception for the Historical Commission, but revisit this for all committees. I think, I mean, who knows how many people won't sign up for a committee because they know that they can't call in. So I think seeing that we're only doing it for the Historical Commission, yes, we're seeing there are current Historical Commission members that need to call in, but I think that might be the case for other committees as well. They just aren't necessarily on the committee yet, and we're missing out on a huge talent pool.
So before we go forward, can somebody provide a little bit of history about why you meet in the middle of the day rather than at night, like the rest of the committees do?
That goes back to the founding of the commission with so many people who were sort of on the older side and who have more daytime flexibility than evening flexibility. And that's how it got started. And we're seeing that, for example, use Bob Morgan again, I think he's going to have, we went to an evening meeting, he'd probably not be able to drive over for a meeting like that, given his age issues. So it was mostly, that was mostly it. Karen would like to add to that.
Several years ago, we went through the same discussion and we actually started meeting at night. And for whatever reason, I don't know what it was, we didn't get near as many people coming to our meetings at night. And I'm not talking about just our commission members, but the public that sometimes comes in.
And our volunteers.
Yeah, and the volunteers, right, yeah.
And I also think there are some people who have jobs that require them to work at night, travel at night, who have kids they need to take care of. I mean, I think, I think it's not just limited to the fact that the Historical Commission meets during the day, that this would be a good idea for other committees.
And also for myself, and I'm only speaking for me, I have to have problems with my eyes and I am not allowed to drive at night. So for me, if we do this, it's pretty much going to eliminate me out of it altogether.
Well, I do drive him. I would drive him.
Crazy. The basis, the base of my question wasn't to try to get your answer changed, I was just trying to understand the history.
Yeah, well, and I just was trying to fill it in.
Yeah. So and I think an exception to the policy for the Historical Commission, just as there's been exceptions to the policy of term limits and whatnot, would be appropriate, especially considering you meet in the middle of the day during normal work hours. I don't know if this is the appropriate venue to talk about the rest of the policy to the rest of the committees, but I'm certainly open to calling in for this purpose.
Yeah, with true support, Laura's suggestion of expand that out to other, other commissions and committees, for sure, so give them more flexibility too.
My concern with that, coming from one of those committees, we did try that multiple times, and evidently did not have as much success as you all have had. We, on the Open Space Committee, there was a lot of use of computer screens and we didn't have a virtual sharing capability for that. It was only a call-in line, so the person participating was only half participating. And then there was also awkward delays that were going on with the call. So I was one of the people that tried to call in, I could only half-hear what people were saying.
And ironically, ours go real-time, and when we do have handouts, Katie's my, Katie's my proxy. She takes pictures and texts me the documents.
And we could solve for it easily with the WebEx as well. I mean, it's not, it's not uncommon.
Well, I mean, I have to agree with Ken here. This is not, we've made a policy on how our committees are going to operate. I'm certainly open to allowing an exception for the Historical Commission, because you guys have met forever during the day. And it has always been a concern for me that it has precluded folks who work and could not come to, you know, one of the reasons I'm not a liaison to the Historical Commission, even though it's of great interest for me, is because I can't, I work in our data. So to be able to come up here and come to the meeting would be a problem.
Understand.
But, you know, if we're going to have a discussion about all the committees, there's a lot of reasons that we've made the decision the way we have. But the Historical Commission is very different. It meets during the day, and so I would certainly be willing to allow some flexibility on them. On the rest of the committees, it's a discussion, I think we have a work session or, you know, those sorts of activities.
And when we were discussing it last, it was earlier this year, and we were discussing a broader question of potentially remote participation at board meetings, also remote participation at committee meetings by board liaisons to address people who've traveled, because we were talking about it in the context of who's going to actually be the liaison for different committees. And we've got a number of board members who travel for work, so we're trying to figure out exactly who would be the right pick for the right committee, given travel considerations. But this isn't the right forum to address that broader policy. But I think for the Historical Commission, I'm all in favor of making it as easy for you to participate in these meetings as it needs to be. So you need to have remote dial-in, let's have remote dial-in. You want to add some technology so you can participate, Jill, better, that's fine, too.
It may not be appropriate for the town to have it recorded on my work.
And we don't have a lot.
Yeah, we don't have a lot of video.
Yeah.
We're working on video, though. We are working on video.
Yeah, that was one of the questions I had related to it, though. How does it, you know, because it's important that people be able to watch our meetings, so how does it translate when you're on the phone remotely? Can people hear what you're saying? I mean, that's the.
I would ask others in the room if you can, because I'm the one who's remote, so.
Yeah, no, I mean, but Ken, does that pick up on the?
The video?
On the video, or is it in that?
It does. The speakerphone is pretty close to the mics.
Okay.
So when I've watched it, it seems to have worked.
I catch most of the side, like if they were having a sidebar conversation and the speaker was in the middle, I would hear Laura go, which is crazy, right? But I wouldn't hear Wally agree with her. But it picks up pretty well.
Well, one way to address that also would be to just repeat the question or the point that you're making on the phone, just saying, okay, there was, Jill just mentioned this on the, on the call, and this is what she said for the record. And then you've got a preservation of everything that was talked about.
Good idea.
So just a curiosity question. Is the phone number for the call-in advertised so that anybody can call in, or is it just the board members? Is it just your call-in number?
We usually send, we, I usually send it to Larry that says, if it's just me, just, he calls me when things start. So it's not very formal. I would say the call-in numbers, the services, if you wanted to publish it, are really inexpensive.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, really inexpensive, right?
Or even Google, Google Voice has it where it's free.
Google Voice, or, yeah.
With, with WebEx functionality as well.
Right. Yeah, I don't want to get into technical discussion for a question.
When we had Denzel calling in, no, we haven't. We had Denzel calling in, we used the 800 number with Pasco.
I don't know if what we call the Pat phone is, can we do more than one number? Because we, because, because Brian dials Jill's number from the phone back on. Big conference.
Yeah, that'd be the conference line.
So I think that.
As long as it's, I mean, as long as it's open and that, you know, if, you know, if a resident wants to participate remotely, I mean, I think we've got to be.
Is it as simple as saying, if you're interested in participating via teleconference in this meeting, please notify, you know, Larry or Brian by this time?
So are we open to that? Because when we discussed as a board, and to Mark's point, we talked about three separate things. We talked about, one, can board members call in? Two, can committee members call in? And three, can the public call in? We said no on all three. And again, I would staunchly be in favor of saying yes across the board. I want to just clarify that that would be a change.
The exception is just, what we're working on here is an exception for Historical Commission committee members to call in, then.
Got you. Okay. That makes sense. Because we were talking about like the technological constraints of if you're going to take public comment, you know, a Skype-type service or just an audio-type service and how we would make sure that we got everybody's information, you could hear for the record. But I think, yeah, for purposes of just participating for council, committee members or commission members, this is just an exception that makes sense.
Yeah, no, I got it. Dial back what I said before.
As I think with us now, we, our meetings run, what, about two hours? So I think if we ended up, like, we're going to have public calling in and et cetera, et cetera, I think our meetings would just go, you know, it would just get completely out of hand. We could be here two and a half, three hours.
And yet I would love to have the community want that engagement, right? That's what we're pushing for, right? I want that problem solved.
I, I think it's a good thing to experiment. I'd offer trying to improve participation, recognizing it's in the middle of the day and it's, you know, I think it was a good question that Ken asked, and it's a good, it's a good response, and that's the way it's been, and there's some expectation that's the way it's going to be in the future. So I think it makes sense to make the exception for this. Since it was brought up, I'm not in favor beyond making this exception. And so if we try to, you know, if this is a smashing success over the next few years, then maybe I'll keep my words. But I don't, we're a super small town of four square miles. Sometimes you got to make plans and you got to show up at town hall and you got to fight for what you believe in. This, you're a dedicated group of volunteers with a lot on your work list. Let's get you participating and let's make it easy. But for town hall meetings, you got to, you got to fight for it, man. You have a passion about something, sit down, craft an email, get a ride. That's, I feel really strongly about that, but an exception for you guys, because I think you have a lot on your plate and it makes perfect sense because it's in the middle of the day.
Okay.
Before we move on, just Larry, you had one more question or point. You talked about the person on the phone being able to vote.
Yes.
I believe Kendra had concerns about that, and that's actually not just a policy thing. That was, actually had to do with a restriction that we wouldn't necessarily be able to waive.
Yeah, so I think we ought to get clarity from Kendra on that, but I think, I remember Kendra saying that, too.
Yeah.
Understand.
Okay. In general, we've got.
Thank you, guys.
Support for the call-in piece of it, so we'll get, circle back on the voting piece.
Okay.
Okay.
And the quorum part, too? I guess they, I guess they made their.
Yeah, quorum and voting.
I think we vote part-related, though.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, yeah, we'll get back with you on those pieces. Cemetery restoration?
Well, that's in progress, and right now I think we're at a, have a level spot on that, and that's going to pick up in the near future. More committee meetings and then the continuation of the ground penetrating radar step, and then perhaps even some completion of some of the steps in the process before fall.
Could we take a little bit of time, and I'm one of the new folks on the board, and not as familiar with the background of this history. If all of you happened to watch the board meeting, when we discussed the cemetery, there was split amongst the board members about locked gate, unlocked gate, whether we're trying to drive traffic through it, or whether it's supposed to be respectable, quiet place. Can you just help me understand what the vision of the Historical Commission is for this? Help kind of guide where my head should be at as we move forward on this project?
Larry's our driver on that.
Well, I think that it's, I think we don't want it open. I think one concern with the locked is that then when people come any time and we're spending all this money to rent, preserve it, then we have to say, well, contact the town and then we'll get someone to drive you up there, you know? So we need some type of in-between, because we want it to be welcome, we want people to go in there. It should be a living history that people can walk around and learn about it. It'd be grave marker, you know, to learn, but it can't be open all the time, right? That would be my, I mean, so I don't know if we necessarily have a vision on it, except that the, right now it's hard because it has to be arranged to, you know, so Larry, jump in on.
Well, I think one, one of the things that has been a concern, possibly anyway, is if it's open all the time, vandalism. With a couple of things that have happened in Boulder and also over in Longmont, that's very, very much a concern, you know? But I don't know. I think if they decided up there, if they really wanted to get in, and I'm not against, you know, locking it up, but I think if they decided they wanted to get in there, I believe they could get in.
Right.
I mean, I think they could scale the fence and say, well, they're probably not going to do that. But I think in, in the case of the one in Longmont, it was some kids, and I think, I don't know if having it locked would be a total deterrent. I think all, I think all issues need to be discussed. I'm not saying I can't do that. And one of the things they were talking about is possibly putting up cameras and surveillance up there. And I think if you look into that, the price, what all has to be done, I think that it's going to be just prohibitive. So I guess we're open to anything on that, because I don't know how to handle that, for sure.
If I remember.
And this was done before I started my tenure, right? One of the stories I was told was the prairie dog mitigation? Is that a nice way to say it? And part of the fencing actually goes underground because the prairie dogs were eating into the graves. So fencing and, fencing and locking become two phases, too. So you've got the big potential of vandals and the middle vandals. But there was, I mean, it was quite significant from the way, the way legend has it.
Well, and I think, too, that there's an issue around the restoration, too, as the, right now the gate is not real secure anyway. You have to put a chain around the gate and the post because the lock itself is messed up. But that's, that should change when the renovation happens. And then we have a better access, a gate that's better accessible. And right now, you know, they come to town, they get the combination, the lock. So eventually, there's supposed to be a street, more or less a street that'll go near the gate and some parking spaces near the gate. And, you know, maybe a welcoming arch, a tree with patio, like, you know, benches and flagstones, let's say, I'm just dreaming right now. But that's probably what it's going to be like. And so having it open in the daytime so people could stroll through it was very, was very appealing. But then how would it, you know, then you get into, okay, if it closes at night, then some town staff or somebody like that, somebody like that would have to come by and secure it. So, and then open it the next morning. So there's some, some technical issues like that, but.
Do you know when they started locking it?
Been quite a while. Even, Vicky's family likes to come in on Memorial Day, for example, so.
Yeah. Well, my great-grandparents were there, and they, it wasn't locked when I was young. There wasn't even a gate that I can remember. I mean, an old, broken-down one, right? So I was just curious when it started getting locked, but there wasn't all the growth of people either, so.
Well, it's been quite a while. It's been inconsistent, just like right now. Well, I went up one day to show some visitors to it and it was, the lock, the chain was unlocked, so it was, in fact, the gate was wide open, so it's, it's really inconsistent, depending on how secure it's been left.
And I think possibly one of the things, then, if we're going to do, keep it unlocked, we may have to look into a solution, and I don't know what it would be to where the gate could be self-closing. And I don't, and you have to be careful in there, because if it gets to be too heavy, there may be some elderly people that, you know, are having a hard time with it. So, and we need to keep it closed. I don't know if there's prairie dogs up there now, but at one time, they were really bad. And I was the one that used, started going up in there back in the early 90s and finding them digging into the gravesites. And there was actually bones, cloth, and parts of caskets were laying out on top of some of them. So that was what got us all started. some of them. So that was what got us all started on that, and there is a four-foot of chain-link fence underneath the existing wrought iron fence up there.
I haven't seen prairie dogs up there now, like we had many years ago. I think with all the building, maybe they've kind of been run out.
I think so.
Yeah.
I appreciate the context.
Thank you.
I like the idea of a, of a self-closing gate with a combination lock. I think that kind of achieves the closure when no one's there, but allows for people to come and go if they've got the combination, and doesn't require a lot of extra staffing to lock and unlock, so I think if it can
Well, in everything we hear, the staff is really critical, getting, the staff, town staff is very critical, getting people the information they need
Yes.
to get in. I, I don't think we've ever had
I think, so my perspective, as, I think, when we had dinner with you last year, a couple of years ago, as well as in that meeting, I think it's a really special place. I think it should be closed at night with a sign that says we're closed at night, the same way we have signs with our parks, saying these are, you know, open dusk till dawn. I think the idea of locking any cemetery for fear of vandalism, I worry about vandalism, but as I think I said a few weeks ago, I think the fools that vandalize the cemetery will have a, a different type of price to pay, and if they really need to get in, they're gonna find a way to, to get in.
To hop a fence.
I, I think it's a special place. I'd like to see it open. I appreciate the, I like the aesthetics of a gate. I appreciate that a gate that, that closes makes some amount of sense, but I think once you start introducing locks and combinations, that's not who we are. It's not this town. We're four square miles.
But we also, that was pretty far away from everything for a long time. Pretty soon, it's gonna be very, very close.
I'm
You know, I mean, a lot of people don't even know that it's there, but when the homes, there's, you know.
And I hope, and I really hope people discover it
Yeah.
and find it to be a tranquil place to sit. And if that lock discourages somebody from finding that tranquility, again, that's just not who I think we are. I want people to discover that place, and I will risk that some fool will vandalize it. I don't really worry about the vandalism, but we're gonna invest, and there's a lot of money on the table here, that we're supporting, and we're, you know, multiple-phase project. If we're gonna invest in this thing, let's open it up to the community, the same way we open up our parks to the community. It should not be locked. And I really appreciate the work you guys do, and I appreciate that you have, you know, I've heard that you guys think it should be locked. I'm asking politely, you know, this is gonna be beautiful. I like cemeteries. I find them very tranquil. They're, you know, I grew up on the East Coast, where it's, you know, there's a lot of, those cemeteries are a lot older than they are out here, and I, I can't remember coming across a locked cemetery in any community I've ever been in. Sure. I think another perspective on that is that, in the general discussion, is that right now, it's very difficult to even get to it, you know, and a lot of people, people I've let up there, you've gotta be able to go fairly steep incline to get up and then around to the other side, so that, that, taking care of something on the media sense, and then the other part, I just forgot what else I was gonna say. Oh, so I, and that, and also, I think, the sign, a sign, the signings, if it eventually emerges from this project, if it is locked, has to make it clear how it, it is possible to get in by doing step one or two, because I think sometimes some of the relatives have come up, and they're used to it not being locked, and then they come up and they're locked, they don't realize that you can come down here and get Right, and they just sit down. Yeah, so, I think that's part of the discussion, too.
Well, I have another question I'd like to propose to the board here, and right now, this, I believe, this cemetery is closed, and by closed, I'm talking about as far as any future people being buried up there. And I'm wondering if, if there is some way we could, and I don't know how you would do this, not open to the general public, where just anybody could be buried up there, but anybody who has family ties, their family came, you know, in here, they've been in here, were pioneers coming in here, if they wanted to, if they could be allowed to be buried up there with their, rest of their family, in family plots or whatever.
That's probably one of those legal issues, too.
Well, that's, that's why I'm just throwing it out.
Because it's also landmarked by Boulder County.
Correct.
And I don't know the legal definition of a closed cemetery, or how it can be open under any circumstances.
Is there additional space in it?
There's, there's quite a bit of space up there, yes.
Laurel, we need to take you for it, too.
Yes, we do.
I mean, it's, it's really
There's like Civil War veterans buried there.
Yeah, there's.
Yeah.
But that's one of the reasons why we're doing ground penetrating radar up there. There's quite a few places up there that are not marked. Some of them were moved way back, probably after the mine closed. When they do the, the radar on there, they can tell there was something in there, and, but they can't tell if there's actually a casket or whatever you wanna, so we don't know for sure if there's somebody in this spot or not. So I think if it was, you know, laid out to the point, then you'd know where you could, you couldn't do it. And that's just merely a thought, that's.
When was the last time somebody was actually buried in the cemetery?
I didn't bring my notes with me, so.
Are we, I'm assuming we're, we're not in decades?
1947 or something like that.
Nineteen fifty's.
Yeah.
Greater than fifty years and less than seventy-five?
I think it's an interesting question, and maybe one that we need to get some guidance from town council and others, county, perhaps, and see if it's, it's even possible.
Now, one of the things that I was told when we went down to, down in Boulder for the square nail awards down there, I was talking to one of the people from the county, and Town of Superior owns the cemetery, if I'm correct.
That's correct.
But Boulder County still, still has jurisdiction over it, because it's a Boulder County historical
Landmark.
Landmark.
Yeah.
So, you know, there's all kinds of things in here, so that would, you'd probably have to go through. And from what I was told, if we want to get that Boulder County landmark and, and get it in for us, so we have total can say over, that can happen.
I just contacted her, she's, I'm gonna be receiving the data and the information on that.
Yeah.
Probably tomorrow.
Okay. So I guess what I'm trying to say, right now, the way it is, we can't necessarily, we, we, we have to really be careful what we do up there. We, I think we have to even give permission, if I, if I'm correct on this, to go in and do the radar, and if we're gonna put the trails in there, I think we have to go to Boulder County, and I, we're not gonna have a problem getting it, according to this person. It's just courtesy, and they want us to do that.
If you just let them know.
Yeah.
As soon as I get that, I'll pass it on.
Anything else on the cemetery? The next item, future name of Coal Creek Trail?
We sent an array of suggested names to the OSAC, and they sent back their three choices, which I guess are gonna come to you next. So we had, we're always happy to have input on, I'm looking at Deautry, is that Deautry Park that's on here? Yeah, you know, we had a lot to say about Deautry Park designation. We're really happy with the way that came out, but, so they're looking at three names, and they have selected three names, and they'll be coming your way. If they haven't already, maybe they have.
No, they have not.
Okay.
They have not.
Okay.
Can we share them, or?
Well, at this point, it's still just the recommendation of the subcommittee of OSAC. OSAC in general has not discussed it yet.
Oh, okay.
Because they sent the names to me, and just for information purposes, but I think they're supposed to discuss it at their meeting on Wednesday.
Yeah, that's right. That was a subcommittee, wasn't it?
Yeah.
That'd be cool.
So, if they have it.
Did, did the historical commission make a recommendation, or just send a list of names?
I think we recommended five.
Yeah, we sent a list, we recommended one, sort of preference, yeah, and it didn't make the cut, though.
It didn't make the cut, so.
Shows how much influence we have.
I, I think we'd like to see four recommendations.
Well, I actually communicated with OSAC that I thought what they should do is give the entire list to the board, but say what their recommendations were, and what the historical commission's were.
That's good.
And you said it would be discussed this Wednesday?
Well, because you remember when we named Wildflower, we had
Yes.
three recommendations, and the board didn't take any of them, so, so I, I had recommended
High grass marks.
Yeah, no, I actually recommended that they come in with a complete list of names, what the historical commission's recommendation was, what their recommendation was, and some background on each one of the names, because if you didn't have the background on the various names
And we sent all that back, yeah.
You wouldn't know. So, and, and you guys had
We sent that
But we appreciate them working, they have been really great about working with us, asking for recommendations, which is really nice, so.
Right. So I think we'll, we'll see.
I took that on a field trip, too.
Sandy, you said it would be discussed Wednesday, because it's not showing on the OSAC agenda?
Um, I, my understanding is they were gonna bring it up, so I don't know.
So, maybe Matt, would you be able to get that added to the agenda, so that
Just, just make sure when you're called.
Just if it is being discussed, I wanna make sure the community is aware that it's being discussed.
The anticipation is killing me.
I don't, but I don't remember. I mean, I remember
We remember, we remember.
I can tell you their top recommendation was
You're very the lead now, you keep it better.
I mean, I can tell you. I mean, because he said this, you know, they're
Well, I don't wanna know what OSAC said. I wanna know what the historical
Okay, then that's fine.
Can we do that?
Yeah, hang on. The battling of the emails.
You wanna know our recommendation?
I wanna hear all.
Oh, okay. Well, our first recommendation was Ackland-Morgan. It was Denzel Ackland and Bob Morgan, the two fellows who were in early on the historical commission, and actually lived in the mine camp, and lived a lot of their life in Superior, in and around Superior. And then we had Interurban, for the Interurban rail cars that went through here on the way to Boulder or Denver.
Industrial, industrial.
Oh, yeah, go ahead, Katie, if you go.
Josephine Roach, who was the owner, the female owner of the industrial mine.
It was in the Colorado historical one.
Pauline, uh-huh. Red-tailed Hawk, CNS, which was a railway in the area, Colorado and Southern Railway. Edith Orman, who was the teacher that everyone loved at Superior. And then Mine Camp Trail, and Kite Route, which was the very famous rail line also.
Yeah, it was the marketing slogan for the Interurban.
Yeah.
I think those are some great names.
Right, OSAC better come up with some douches, man. Those are good. That's crazy.
And they chose from
They didn't go off that list.
Yeah, they chose
They just picked a different top three
Top three, different top
Than the historical commission had.
So which were the top three of the historical commission?
Inter, oh, we didn't
They did one.
We really just said, we really recommended the Ackland-Morgan, because of the, because of how important they were. They are.
Their families were
Exactly.
Their families, yeah.
Yeah.
And it follows them
And the other ones, we just gave nickel.
I mean, we have, you know, Osti, Kupner, et cetera, so to us, embrace that. And we did lose Denzel, you know, less than a year ago, and Bob's, Bob's health is struggling, so.
Well, I appreciate hearing the backstory on, on the names, because otherwise, you know, if we're just considering names without the context and history, it's, we're not giving it the appropriate weight.
And step two, to put an interpretive sign in as well
Yeah, yeah.
to give some more context
Absolutely.
to the name, yeah. Yeah, so that's, I think you had got them all, didn't you?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
Good work.
Thank you.
All right.
Oh, I know what I was gonna say. And when I sent that, we sent that to OSAC, we had the paragraph statements, so I think they'll probably pull context on the end, too.
Good. Okay, the last item was what's new at the historical museum.
Okay, I did that on the
Sure. Yeah, and I would just, I'd love to talk a little bit more about this. Oh, that means Which one that happens?
Which part of this is this?
Well, that was more about the museum. I think the diorama is really the new thing at the museum that you guys should all come and see. It's really, really neat. But just a few things that we're working on. We finally, we talked about this last year at this meeting. This is just a draft, that's just a folded draft, but we finally have a brochure that we will be able to put around town, that we're finalizing. We also have a, I only have one copy of this, but we have a walking tour now that we're working on with Melissa. She's been really great about helping us with a map and a walking tour, leaving from town hall or the museum, going up to the industrial mine, talking about, as you walk, the things that you see. So I can pass this one, one around.
So oftentimes, people say, where's the coal mine? So we're doing this thing, huh?
Yeah.
So we came up with this how-to-get-there-from-the-town-hall-or-from-the-museum, and this brochure.
Yeah, and then I think one big thing that Jill's been working on is this video, you can talk about it.
So, it's the concept that you can go up to the current signs that are there with a QR code, scan your phone, and it will bring up a script that is the story of, of what's there. So currently, we're building Grasso Park. And it's been a little harder than I, than I thought it, that story, but while you're wa, listening to the script, it brings pictures of back in the day. So you would see what the houses looked like then, what the creeks looked like, what it looked like when it flooded, and pulling in the pictures we have of the time period. It's about a three-to-five-minute vignette that just brings it more to life. A lot of it's based off the second-grade field trip, but the concept is we then use the walking tour that leads you to the next QR code, right, and, and have two or three of those. Ideally, you know, if I get really visionary, and my day job ever settles down, it would take you from the cemetery to the mine, and be able to track, track through them all. And it's very simple. You're standing there, and if you look to your right, which is, you know, our west, and just kind of let them panoramic through, let's see those, those pictures back. I've been collecting snippets from different folks over the years with their stories. It started because Denzel used to go off about the chimney, and the machinery on the chimney of the houses, and how they were done. And it was just so hysterical that I recorded it. So we've got some of those that at some point, like, if we got to the house, we can use Denzel there. Different landmarks, you know, telling stories about where they would go sledding, where the swimming hole was, how the milk got, actually got delivered, right, because Grasso was a milkman. So how did it, how did it go through? And where did he go? And, and Bob used to follow him on his, not Grasso, but the, the milk-delivery guy on his paper route, right? So we've got those recorded, so how do we, at some point, and I'm not this good on iMovie, right, but get those things mixed in, and, and just let it grow, once we get the first one out.
Do you wanna talk about the photographs?
That's the photographs that go back in time.
Oh, you're right.
Oh, that's, that's sports table. I'm like, yeah, that's
That's it.
Let's get this in, too, if we can.
Yeah, we're also working on this, I'd say, I'd, I'd like to stay in partnership with the Chamber. We're doing, you can sponsor a photo, and we are gonna do a whole wall in the sports table with historic photos sponsored by businesses. And we're gonna kick that off Fourth of July at the Pancake Breakfast. We're gonna have one already framed, and we're really excited about that. Oh, and then the, kind of the finale is gonna be, the hope is with this Gate with Santa, that we're gonna have all the photos in the lobby for everyone to look at, so it'll kind of be completed, I don't know, you know, August to November. We're gonna shorten it, probably. But, and have all, I just, I love the idea that all the kids and parents that are in the sports table every night can just walk the, that hallway, especially the youth, and see the great photos. So the Chamber has already, already said they're gonna buy one. TJ's already picked out the photo that he wants, and we're gonna start promoting it and send a joint letter with them. I'm trying to see if I have the, I might have a flyer. And, yeah, so that's exciting. We'll see. We might sell like four, or twenty? I don't know, we'll see.
Hey, you know, we can already put our dibs on pictures.
Yeah, yeah. And then we thought if it's really successful, people could also And then we thought if it's really successful, people could also have a photo in their business. They, you know, we'd have like one on display, and it's gonna have a plaque, and it's gonna say donated by, or sponsored by, and then it's gonna have the historic information about, you know, where the photo was taken and stuff like that, so. We'll see, we'll see how it goes.
How much do they cost, and how do people figure out what it is?
We, well, we're taking money tonight. I think it's like four hundred, four hundred to, a hundred and fifty to four hundred, depending on the size of the photo. This is a very rough draft, you guys can pass around, but we hope, we hope, we, you know, we originally, Brian and I met a long time ago with Rita, she kind of spearheaded it. She's like, they needed, sports table needs to buy a bunch of these photos and put them on the wall. And then it kind of transformed into, why don't we make this more of a sponsorship where there's businesses? And the Chamber seemed excited about it, so, so we're gonna start promoting it Fourth of July. So, hopefully, you'll hear more about it then. And, the thought was businesses, but then, of course, individuals, it'd be really cool if any individuals wanted to do it, too.
You know, there'll be a plaque or whatever it does need, who's.
On it.
Who contributed to the purchase, yeah.
Yeah.
That's great. Jill, I wanted to say thank you for your efforts on the recordings of Bob and Denzel. I know you've been working on that for years.
Yeah, we started about three years ago.
That was really, really smart of you to think of that at the time, and appreciate your, your efforts with that. Because that, that's history, that, you can't recreate that stuff, so, that's really neat.
Yeah, making these guys start to capture like all the square nails and all those things, and like put it in the file drawer, because twenty years from now, we're gonna have a whole new crop. So, we started that fire truck, I think.
It would be great if we did get these in both Superior Elementary in Colorado for the kids. You know, I mean, I think it should be.
Yeah, well, and Katie's idea.
Reaching out to VSD and just make sure that.
With the hotels and property shops.
And the local history classes, you know, social studies classes, just have a local history component to whatever they're learning.
You know, and this year, we did take some of the lost Superior books and donate them to all the libraries and schools around.
That's great.
And they were beside themselves.
They're really.
I mean, they would have.
They didn't have them.
No.
Yeah. I think that's about it, that's what I wanted to mention.
Good for you.
I mean, do you guys have? What about your rotating exhibits that you and Lindsay and Alan?
We're, we're always working on exhibits.
You're, we just, that was, we didn't do that.
Yes, yeah, we're trying to start doing quarterly exhibits and promoting it more, and kind of marketing things a little bit more. That's, that's, I know we don't, that, we don't have really set in stone what we're doing. The diorama is kind of the next that we might kind of do a kickoff with that. But we really wanna try and get more people coming on a regular basis to the museum with different exhibits, so.
How many visitors are you seeing on a monthly basis?
Well, we're only open one day a month, and it ranges from about five to twenty. We had, the day we had the historic walk, we had, I lost count of that day, it had so many people.
Well, we had thirty-seven on the walk that day, yeah.
And that walk usually gets between thirty, I think we had sixty-one year, the very first year, but it usually has about around thirty people on the walk. Looking down the road, I got an idea recently about maybe appealing to the town government and the town board trustees about maybe putting a shelter, like a pavilion type structure in Grassel Park to put the farm equipment under, because the farm, the wood on it gets worse every season, of course, and we're thinking about that. We're thinking about looking at the possibility of getting a semi-professional person, someone who's in the trained in the field, that we could contract with to help us get our materials cataloged, because we, we aren't real. We need more consistency on that. Those are a couple of other things that we're thinking about for the future. We've already had contact with the, two of the three second grade teachers about the upcoming September field trip, so, we've got stuff in the works.
That's one of my favorites. And I would encourage my fellow board members, please, consider attending and doing, for the Town Hall portion, or any of the, or any of the segments, can all use help at the Town Hall portion. I think last year, I did all three solos.
That's why we're looking for recruits, actually.
Is it all second graders in Superior? Yes. Both Superior and Colorado?
Uh-huh.
Three, and Mar. And Mar. So, it's three days, usually three segments each day, so you do the same routine nine times. Well, I'll have second graders this year, so I will.
You have inside, inside plant there, find out how we do.
I think I started these when our kid, our kids are now going into eighth and ninth, and I started it when.
They started the year I joined, at least the year before I joined the commission, which would have been, yeah, just Kay and Nick were in first grades.
Yes, college and second grade, so that's when I started, yeah. So, it's been going on a long time.
And we came to the realization that kids from original Superior and Sagamore go to Monarch, and so we got them involved, too.
Yes.
They're enjoying it as well.
They love it, teachers love it, parents, they come.
We tend to see us bike through the museum after, after Saturday.
Yes, that's great, yes. Good. Katie did the poster I found on the wall that made the cut for getting framed.
We're gonna do, we're actually, I'm having my frame shop up. No, yes, it, right now, we're not framing it. We just put it, we just preserved it right now, so, it hasn't been framed yet, but it's protected, so, yeah, it's cool.
Beer cans are secure, too, so.
Yeah, it's more important.
We may have some other keys they did.
More stuff than we have.
More stuff. We found a lot of stuff in that cross, but these old keys, different metal.
Skeleton keys, dark keys.
Yep, a whole, a whole ring of skeleton keys. I was looking for the box of buried treasure, never found that, that was my own. And we're keeping those keys just in case the treasure turns.
Unlock that chest, huh?
You could loan them instead of donate them.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, there you go.
Those keys back. Unless we hear about it first.
That's right.
That's all that I can think of about upcoming things.
I have one thing I'd like to bring up, and try and, I would like the board to take this only as food for thought and no other way. As, as there's policies made that affect, say, the Historical Commission, I would like to see in the future, perhaps, the board be a little more transparent, if you will, and work with us a little bit, as you're thinking about doing these policies and perhaps allowing us to at least maybe have a little bit of input, I'm not talking, say, a little bit of input on how it will affect us and stuff. This sort of dates back to, what is it, about four years ago, when we had our bylaws basically thrown out? We had spent two years or better doing bylaws, and I think we lost our, what was it, our, our bank account that we had over in, in the bank. And I don't think we would have had any, any, any problems, I think we'd have been perfectly fine with it. But, we didn't find out about it until about two, two or three months after it'd already been put into place. We didn't even know our bylaws had been thrown out, we didn't, you know, and so, it's sort of a little, I don't know, it, I don't know how to word it, is, we'd just like to have maybe a little more transparency. And if we could make some suggestions, perhaps, what pertains to us, maybe we could come up, you know, something we could change just a little bit if necessary, which would be fine with the board, and make things run a little smoother. So, like I say, I would like to put that out as food for thought and nothing else.
Okay, that's a good suggestion. Appreciate that.
But I, thank you for that suggestion. I'll just say that, I'm not sure what happened a few years ago, but almost everything that comes to the board that's related to a particular subcommittee, I think we have a practice now of pausing, taking a timeout, and saying, well, what does that committee think about it? Because I think we got tripped up in that a couple times over the last couple of years, where we were making recommendations that didn't necessarily come out of committee. And so, I think it's a good suggestion and a good practice that we're trying to, trying to do. Things that, things that involve a committee, I think any one of the seven of us should raise your hand and say, wait a minute, what does the committee think about this? And did this come out of that committee? And if not, send it back.
So, I don't think we did that when we talked about the remote call-in. I think it was more just the seven of us saying, this is what we think, rather than going to any of the committees and asking for their input.
I think that it was a broader issue beyond just the committees, right?
Well, it was, it was three separate issues, but the committee one, we never took to the committees. So, I think that's something we could improve upon for future.
I do like the way they publish the agendas, but I probably read one out of four or five.
We're getting better.
You're good. Where, where I'm going is a nice little executive summary that says, these are what we're covering, because then I know which ones to read or where to go on it, versus just digging into three links. So, I, I like it, I mean, it's only been a year or two that they started publishing that, but it is really.
You're talking about the weekly, the weekly summary, yes? That's pretty good.
Yeah, I just, I need a blurb at the beginning. Because then I would, then I would probably read fifty percent instead of twenty percent. And that's just me as a, not a commission member speaking, that's me speaking as a resident.
Are you talking about the agendas themselves, private meeting, or the?
Both. It's just, it's like, ooh, I wanna go to this one, but I don't read them soon enough, things like that, yeah.
Stick to your.
Yeah, to Kevin's point, get off your tail, come to Town Hall, and, yeah, if I had a little bit more of a summary.
You're talking about in the weekly meetings, this email to have a little synopsis in what's in each meeting.
Yep, yep. I'm, I'm talking ten words that just go, that's, this description means that, and like I said, get my, get my tail over here.
Okay, anything else? Thank you all for your service to the town and for coming tonight, we appreciate the opportunity to meet.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you.
And we do appreciate the openness, so.
Okay, well, adjourn, break down the tables and get ready for a meeting.
Sorry, sorry, I say that out loud.
You can go on and watch us.
Oh, I'm sure.
I'm going back to work.
Four or five hours, come back to work.